John Down, I'm part of the Hungerford 2036 Neighbourhood Plan team. And we're here tonight to try to get people to give us their feedback on what we've come up with so far in terms of aims and objectives for the plan. So if they're not here tonight, they could go to hungerford2036.info, give us some feedback by email from there.
Carol Anne Farrell, and I'm Chair of Planning for Hungerford Town Council.
And I'm Denise Gaines, and I'm on the Environment Planning Committee.
And what message are you giving people tonight?
This is a wonderful opportunity to come and put your views about the town, not just for planning, to come and understand what type of planning we'd like, and anything else in town. I'll pass over to Denise, you've been involved with the neighbourhood plan as well, so you would be able to give more information.
Yeah, so I'm on the neighbourhood planning as well. So what we're finding with people now is, people tend not to actually buy new houses, they're doing a lot of extensions on their old houses, and as a result, they've got to go through the planning process, if it's a particular size. So they want to add an extension, or another room, or whatever, they can come to the planning process and do that. So what they do then is they put a planning application in, and tonight we're showing people what that means, about putting the application in, looking at the plans, how it goes from that process afterwards.
And for people who aren't actually here tonight, how can they get this information?
Well, the information's always available on West Berkshire Planning Portal, that's a very sort of open portal, and actually you can look at all plans on there as well. So you can look at all the plans that people make. And so if you see, for instance, somebody has got a yellow poster outside their house, and you look and think, oh, what's that going to happen? You can go on to the West Berkshire Planning site and actually look and see what that is.
Okay, brilliant, thank you very much.
My name's David Small, I'm a local solicitor in Hungerford, current chairman of the Chamber of Commerce. So this message is for all of you who are in business in the Hungerford area. I'm speaking from the Town Council Annual General Meeting, and seen some people tonight who are members or potential new members. If you'd like to join, please get in touch and have a look at the Chamber of Commerce website.
My name's Rob Chicken, I'm on the Highways and Transport Committee, and we look after all sorts of things to do with highways, the pigeons, the salt bins, the dog poo bins, the lights, and so on and so on. The big things that's come to light this evening are speeding on the high street and through Lower Denford, and also people concerned about pigeon poo. The pigeon poo, we've got a project in hand, so this season should see a reduction in pigeons in the town, hopefully.
Yes, my name's Claire Windsor, and I'm Chair of Finance and General Purposes. I've been on the council four years now, and hoping to stand again with the elections coming up in May, so worthwhile being involved in it.
So thank you, my name is councillor Sally Hawkins, and I'm a member of the Recreation and Amenities Committee. The display tonight looks at the assets that we look after, including the war memorials, the memorial gardens, the playgrounds, and so on. We're launching the Hungerford in Bloom competition, which we hope lots of people will enter this year. We're particularly keen that people enter either their gardens, or... A new category this year is containers, so if they've got a container, a hanging basket or a window box, we're keen for businesses to be involved, and we're particularly keen for schools to be involved, and there's a specific category for schools as well, so we're really keen for the schools to get involved.
Good evening, guys. How are you?
I'm Sebastian Brown, I'm the Chair of the Hungerford Youth Council. My main aim is to get Hungerford's voice heard on a national level in the youth parliament.
Hi, my name's Charlotte, and I am the publicity manager, and our aim is to improve the profile on the youths in Hungerford.
Hi, my name's Charlotte, and I'm secretary, so I kind of just, you know, listen to everyone's ideas and get it out to everyone.
Hello, my name is Becca, and I am the treasurer, and I want to make Hungerford become better.
I'm Harry, I'm the vice-chair. My goal isn't, you know, to get Hungerford to do things for us, it's what we can do for Hungerford, and improve the standard of life for everyone included.
Hi, I'm Andy Robinson, I'm the Chair of Hungerford Youth and Community Centre, and I'm supporting this group of young people from the community who are coming forward, who really want to put something back into the town in the next few months. This is the start of something, I hope. I think these young people are very brave to come forward, they're largely a steering group at the moment, but they're very enthusiastic and have lots of great ideas about what young people can do with Hungerford.
Do a quick summary of all of the different groups, I've got some microphone runners around. So we always question stuff, we start with that, we start with that. So what have you learned from that?
It's what I've been able to tell other people, what I've learned tonight. People have been asking what we do with money, I've got a few little clues to try and show it rather than just the pie chart. They'd like the format of tonight? Yeah, Steve, what's that? Great, so we've got Richard on Highways and Transport. Any news with Richard?
Yes, mainly things that came up, improvements at the road station, I think we expected that one. We've had the speeding, there's a very strong concern about speeding on the Cullum and on the A4 towards Marlborough.
And the high street.
And speeding is generally a major issue. The bus buses, they've had a plea to try and keep our buses running, and if possible even a bit more buses. And I think that was largely, oh pigeons, pigeons came up again, as we know, that tends to keep arising, and transport, the pigeon poo on the high street, or place in broken pavement as well, on the high street. That's about it, I've got to move on because there's lots of different people, thank you very much.
Thanks, Richard.
Hi, David Small, I'm the current chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, which is an association of local businesses, membership fifty-five, sixty or so, we meet in various places depending on where's available, once a month, and our next meeting is going to be at the Rugby Club on the, when is it, twenty-sixth of March. And even if you're not a member, if you're interested, you'd be very welcome to come along. And the Chamber does various things during the year, apart from meeting and talking, which we do very, very well. The biggest thing we do undoubtedly is the Hungerford Extravaganza, used to be called the Victorian Extravaganza, we've dropped that tag over the past couple of years, and the last event in December last year was, I thought, excellent, and we've had nothing but really good favourable feedback from it. And we actually broke even on it, which is fantastic. I was mainly in charge of the fundraising, this chap here, Derek Loft, our treasurer, was the organizer, and the master of ceremonies, as it were, on the night, did a fantastic job. So that's about it, really.
Thank you, Derek.
Can't think of anything else to say. But we're here, and I've got information and forms to fill in and all sorts of stuff. Thanks, well.
Thank you. And then we'll go to Chair of Planning and Environment, Carol Anne Farrell. Hi, thank you everyone that came over to us and had a chat, and we explained that this is the process of planning that comes before us. Obviously, I'd like to point out to everyone that we don't make the final decisions sadly for Hungerford, and that goes back to West Berkshire, we are the council team, and people generally appreciate that. I have been asked the question tonight about Salisbury Road, I don't want to get any big discussion about that, but I promise you that when we get any information in about Salisbury Road and its development, we will let you know, and we'll invite you to that meeting, to come into planning when it comes before us. That's really what I'd like to say about that Salisbury Road, thank you very much. Thanks, Carol Anne. And then we're going to move down, oh I can see Chris, sorry Chris, I've picked you out. Oh, you want John to do it? John, you have to do it.
Well, I think what's interesting is, we actually have a number of people come over and talk to us about the neighbourhood plan, and I think what's interesting here is, despite some of the background that's on our planning front, I think people are very interested in the fact that with the neighbourhood plan, we'd have a lot more of the control and the say here locally in the town, but we have all got to engage with it and give our feedback and make sure that we agree with the conclusions that we come to along the way. It is going to be a long process, it's got a lot of work involved, but the more that people put their input into it, the better it's going to be, and the more people vote for it when we have a referendum, and when we do that, we'll be able to have our say about how things pan out in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. Smart enough to, so John, we're most down in our system, he's on his phone.
Hello, hello everybody, it's not Ken Dodd. I'd just like to say thank you to all the fantastic volunteers who've already started cleaning up and smarting up Hungerford, long may that continue. We would of course love you all to shower us with as much money as you possibly can, and indeed if you know any businesses who would like to help, that would be brilliant. I'd also like to say that the warmth that I've received in the start of this campaign has been absolutely amazing, and I'm completely overcome with emotion. On top of that, on March the twenty-seventh, at the Croft Fields Hall, we're having a little get-together of all the volunteers, and you're all absolutely welcome, thank you.
Thanks for listening.
Thanks, Helen. Thank you for coming across and seeing us down here. We now, and thank Henry Oliver from the North West Exhale for his presentation on it. As you know, Hungerford is the heart of the North West Exhale, a fact that will go on, welcome scientists are going up shortly to the town, which are also bear in mind the Great West Way. I want those who don't know that we are on the Great West Way and what it's all about, please commentate on our leaflets. And the other thing is that we're looking at is the other side of town, the non-antique trade. We have companies that have thousands, millions of pounds in turnover, they have employment of over a thousand people on Charnell on the Business Park, and we in October will be running the third trade showcase, it'll be in an evening do, and that it'll be inviting everybody, all ages, because a lot of people, not just the students leaving, but people wanting return to work, and these are the opportunities that will be available in and around Hungerford. So please put the sixteenth, I meant this is the sixteenth, the fifth, sixteenth of October in your diary for John and I in the evening, thanks.
I'm Helen Farrell. I'm currently Chair of the Hungerford Twenty Association, which has been in existence for almost forty years, and we still have a very lively interaction with our twin town of Liguay in central France. We have a stall out in the hall, if anybody has a clue to see us, please come and see us on your way out. I do have suppliers, which we can give you more information. We are about to take a coach party of Hungerford residents over to Liguay from the sixth to the tenth of June this year. There are still a few places available on the coach, and if anybody thinks they would like to come and join us, please see us on the way out. Thank you. Thanks, Helen. Thank you, Helen, and thank you very much for having us this evening to be here. So really, the town of Manor, we've had lots of interest tonight, talking about the river, looking at the pictures, can the constable really catch a fish that big? And the answer is yes, it wasn't someone else catching it for me. We've had a lot of interest about pop-tide and our ancient traditions, for those of you that don't know, we've got information here about our pop-tide. We don't look out for the ducks, sorry. And also information of the history of the town of Manor, it's a very complicated history, but we're an ancient charity, we've had trustees for four hundred and one years, ancient rights we've given to us, to the commoners back in fourteen fifty-eight, so we had our first constable, and I was in like the two hundred and ninety-third. So, and we've also been talking about our orchards, so we have an orchard which we've discovered, some of you may have seen a clearing on the A4 just going out of Hungerford on your right-hand side. Well, that's an orchard that we purchased two years ago, and two years ago we couldn't see inside it, we had no idea that what was in there, the little house huts that you see in there, we didn't even know that existed when we bought it, because it was just covered in scrubs. So slowly we've actually discovered what we've got in there, we've got over sixty different varieties of fruit trees, we've got pear trees, we've got stone fruit, we have got cherries, we have got so much in there. And please come and talk to us, because with the common you may see activities going on, we just recently had to cut down some trees because they were diseased. We're not of the game of actually cutting down trees just for the sake of it, or changing things just for the sake of it, but we have to manage the land not only under the rules and regulations that we have to abide to, but we're also doing it for our future generations. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'd keep those who'd like to thank you for inviting myself, Lee and Joel on this evening, it's been lovely engaging with many of you. We've gathered some intelligence, we've found to attend any events that we can support Signed a few people up to Neighbourhood Watch, we've got plenty more forms here if anyone else is interested in Neighbourhood Watch, and we've been busily promoting our new Facebook page for West Berkshire.
Brilliant, thank you. Thank you. The Allotment Association, Heart Lock, Ted Angel.
Yeah, we're the wonderfully named Heart Lock, we're with the Allotment Association, and we manage on behalf of Allotment and Council two allotment sites, which are leased by the council. We're enjoying an anniversary this year, we're ten years on. It doesn't sound very long, but it's been a hard old graft sometimes, we live a certainly insecure life, for one reason or another, but it's been a very successful life. We now run our allotments with a waiting list, which for the first time over ten years, we've become more stable, and we are a community on our own in that way, which is a very wonderful thing, we're quite pleasing ourselves, as you probably gather. It was good to talk to everybody and to be able to promote the association, and of course healthy living. And we like the format, it's got to be a plus about it.
Brilliant, thank you, Ted.
Why not? Alright, so the youth council is all about changing the reputation of the youths and providing certain facilities and help for, I don't know, people like us, younger people, trying to change the reputation that we have as young people, particularly recently.
They've had bad press recently, and one thing I would like to add to that is that when we came up to a couple of the people around the exhibitions, and they said, what is it that you'd like us to do for you as the youth of our community? And the answer was, actually it's more about what we can do for you, and I just thought that was the most brilliant answer, and I'm real proud of the team, so well done.
The thing I wanted to do was to give the youth of Hungerford a voice on the national level by going to youth parliament, which was something I tried to do when I was the youth councillor in Newbury, they repeatedly said they wouldn't do it, but since I've come here, it's been a lot quicker, they've all said, yes, we should do that, and we're probably going to have elections sometime in June, so, yeah.
Well done, well done. Thank you. Recreations and Aliens Committee.
Thank you, Helen, yes, there's been a lot of interest, really, it's nice to have seen so many people interested in the amenities that we have in Hungerford, and that the Recreation and Amenities Committee look after. People have been interested and pleased and recognise the assets that we have. The other thing that's been really nice is, there's been quite a lot of interest in the Hungerford in Bloom, and we would encourage everybody to get involved, we would like as much support as possible, and the details will be on the Town Council website, at least by Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, thanks, everybody. So I will now invite questions from LoL, so if anybody has a question, please raise your hand and I'll get an microphone to you. Really, no question? It's a special point at home, isn't it? Oh, there's one at the back. Grace.
In your minutes, it says that you've installed another camera, this is last year. Can you tell me, are the cameras in Hungerford monitored by anybody? Does anybody look at the pictures? So has somebody steals something outside of the property? Can we go to somebody and say what was happening?
Okay, thank you. So I can answer that briefly. Do you want to, Grace? Go to the next one, please.
First off that, I think we've got new cameras gone up, that's actually put up by this gate mark, I think we've got that there. Are they regularly monitored? Yes, they are, we've got them in the Town Council office, we've got all the screens up there, and they record all the time, so we know if there is an incident, then we can record, we're recording, and the police do regularly come into the office, and if there's been a crime to track it, they've got evidence to track it down. So, yeah, I think that covers it, thank you.
Thank you. How many houses are lying building? Planning? We're going to Carol Anne for that one. Final number for the house, we've got West Berkshire, and then currently being generated, which I'm not sure to the day, that's about two years, twenty-two.
Yeah, West Berkshire's local plan is out in twenty-twenty.
We currently have a site, as everyone is aware of, at the top of Salisbury Road, which is for a hundred houses, but they only have the access at the moment, it's not detailed. Planning of sites going to be for on any site we get, we will come back to the town and say, come and just discuss it, let's see what happens. Can't do anything until that comes before us. As far as final numbers, we haven't got that yet, and hopefully the neighbourhood plan will be able to actually adjust that, and we'll be able to have more of what we'd like. Obviously John's at the front, and I'm sure John will respond, because this is a joint thing for everyone to get together, and, you know, we can all have an influence of how many houses we'd like, and how many West Berkshire might want, and maybe somewhere along the way, we can compromise and come to an agreement. That's all I can really say. Thank you. Or if you want to add to that, of course.
Only as much as, as I'm probably repeating myself, the neighbourhood plan does at least give power to the town to make the decisions on locations and numbers on those locations. So until that's in place, after a referendum, which could well be another two-plus years away, we don't really have that power that is with West Berkshire. But I think some of the statistics that we've seen about the town in terms of the average age, for example, indicate that the town does have certain requirements that maybe do need to be addressed, and we'll be looking at the best way of doing that within the plan, and obviously along the way consulting with everybody.
Thank you, John. Emma at the back with Mark.
I meant to be using a Twitter discussion this evening on West Berkshire, and I was about reinvigorating our high streets. I just wondered how Hungerford was doing compared to other towns in terms of what they have to offer regarding shops on the high street. But actually, it's a long question, and maybe I should stop there.
Does anybody want to answer that?
Well, I'm totally up to date, we had actually a professional chair. We had actually a professional survey done a few years ago by an organisation then known as Action for Market Towns, and a guy who'd done a lot of these reports came down and spent some time in Hungerford, we had to pay him, but this report was prepared, and Hungerford actually came up pretty well, you know, in terms of the number of independent shops we have at that, we actually still have, compared to a lot of places, we're doing pretty well. Obviously, there are empty shops here, and, you know, increasing the number of visitors and tourists we have, and I don't think changing the town is the only dedicated business to look at that. But, you know, it's not much, Helen, we're doing all right.
Thank you. And I saw one, I had said one last question from Charlotte, do you want to add something?
Yeah, what can we do, well, there's only seven of us at the moment in the youth council, but what can we actually do for the public to, like, volunteer ourselves? So we want to volunteer ourselves, but better equipped on the young people in Hungerford, so what as the public, would you want us, would you want to see us doing, if that makes sense?
So I think, I'll answer that, so I don't feel that his team would welcome your support there. There's help at the hub and library, there's, we see some volunteers, I can see the girls going, you can come with us. So I think there are lots, you know, lots of organisations in and around the town who would welcome your input, so, you know, talk to them, if you need any help, I'll help you. All right? Okay, so I'm going to close the questions, I hope you, well, there's one more, I'll stop here.
Hello, everybody, yes, I just want to mention about the library. Three years ago it was going to be closed, it's now open, it's now a heart of the town. So the library that you've got over the road there, okay, is still your library, it's still managed by Hungerford, West Berkshire Council. The building is now on a lease by Hungerford Town Council for ninety-nine years at a peppercorn rate. The Friends of Hungerford Library, or the hub, now actually maintain the building, and we therefore have to raise money to keep that building going. If we don't keep the building going, it will close. So we are, or we have been doing a lot of work in there, you'll notice that there are shows, there are pop-up shops and stuff in the library. We're trying to market the library as a business, because we have to find somewhere around about twenty-nine thousand pound a year to keep it going. We've been very fortunate, we've had places like Tesco's, various other organisations support us, but it is your library, it is your hub. We've had pop-up shops with heat, we've had music nights, people using it for music, we have lots of craft and chat, I've been echoing.
Art exhibitions.
Art exhibitions, craft and chat, but, and Spanish, yeah. The point being is, is that that is, a lot of people talk to me and say, well, what's happened to the library, what's happened to it? Well, that's what's happened to it. So we need the town's support, okay, as other organisations, we're no different to any other. But if you want to keep the library going, then it's up to you. There are very good facilities there, I don't know if you've been in there, but we've got a thing called the Curve, which is the bit around the corner, that you can actually hire out and use for business or whatever. So we use the library when the library is closed, and it's a facility open for the town. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Okay, so now I would like to share some exciting news as a bonus, and announce this year's Freedom of the Town nominees. These are in no particular order, the individuals have been nominated by residents of the town and chosen by an independent panel from the community. Our first recipient has over thirty years been playing the organ for services, weddings, funerals at St Lawrence's Church. She organises charity concerts, the church choir, and the annual church flower festival. I am delighted to announce Chris Buck as one of this year's Freedom of the Town recipients. I don't think Chris is with us this evening, but I know she's absolutely thrilled as I got the opportunity to speak to her, so I think she was shocked and humbled, but I think she was really thrilled, so that's good to know. My next recipient is a gentleman heavily involved with Chang. He drives and organises the rotor for the town's handy bus, always ensuring everybody gets safe passage door to door. He helps residents in the town by collecting and delivering prescriptions, and is even known to do a swap shopping for them, those less able. Patient, kind, and always willing to lend a hand, I'm delighted to announce Ted Angel as our second recipient. Congratulations, Ted, we were just thrilled that you were chosen this year, so congratulations. My last recipient goes to a previous town mayor, he has served on the committee of both the Bolts and the Hungerford Club. He's a valued rival to Chang. He's a valued rival to Chang, and now serves as trustee on the Hungerford and Library Community Trust. He's always at the forefront. His community knowledge, dedication, and commitment has ensured the success of the Hungerford Hub. So huge congratulations. Go to Peter Harris. So this concludes the evening. Before we close, can I give a huge thank you to Claire Barnes, Sarah Hennessy, Sarah Chatters, Nuehwan, for the support and all of the refreshments and help this evening? Thank you very much for attending. Can I have a quick show of hands to let me know, did you like the format?
Yes.
Yeah? Brilliant, so we can do it again? Yes. Thank you for attending, and have a lovely evening. Thanks.